Okay, excellent. Thank you, everyone, for joining us in this virtual board meeting. Adila, if you would like to go ahead and do the roll call, please.
Yes. Tanya Vudi.
Here.
Mendoza.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Lindsey Ryan.
Here.
Hale Perin.
Here.
Cartha.
Rebecca, you've got the motion for the approval of the meeting agenda. Do you have that in front of you? Rebecca?
Yeah, sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay. I will go ahead and do it then. I move that the Board of Education approve tonight's board meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Tanya Vudi.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan.
Yes.
Hale Perin.
Yes.
Cartha.
Yes. All right, well, thank you, everybody, for joining us. As you know, due to the COVID-19 crisis, we are holding this public board meeting virtually in accordance with Executive Order 2020-07. Our goal is to provide as much transparency to our community as possible while following the recommended safety guidelines during this public health emergency. This is the first time that we are holding a meeting this way. There are bound to be some missteps in communication or technological issues, so we appreciate your patience and understanding as we continue to refine this process. This past week has been, to say an understatement, has been a challenge for our community and our nation as a whole. We have needed to make adjustments that we had never contemplated, and so I want to take some time to recognize and thank our interim superintendents, our administrative team, and our educators and staff for the tremendous efforts they have undertaken in the last couple of weeks. I know that there have been a lot of long days and late nights to create and continuously evaluate and adapt an e-learning plan that can meet the needs of all of our learners. I know our administrative team has put in significant hours and efforts to ensure that all families have access to the technology they need for distance learning and that there is a plan in place to provide meals to students who rely on school for regular nutrition during the academic year. And I know that there were some hiccups with that plan today, and we are aware of the challenges and are going to work to figure out how we can fix that for this week and moving forward. I know how hard our educators and staff are working to stay connected with their students and maintain the atmosphere of learning and care that they have cultivated all year, even as many of them have their own children at home whose learning they have to oversee or have parents or family members that they need to care for during these difficult times. I know that our interim superintendents, who signed up to help us through a year of leadership transition, have gone far above and beyond to provide genuine and empathetic care and leadership for our district and community during this really challenging time. And as for my colleagues, who are usually sitting at a table with me, I don't think anyone on this school board ever thought we would be governing through a time period like this. But I could not ask to be working alongside a more caring group of individuals who care so deeply about this community and are committed to the hard work of getting us to the other side of this crisis. And I would be truly remiss if I didn't offer a special thanks to our Board Secretary, Adila Kareshi, who has worked so tirelessly this last week to adapt to new rules around conducting our meetings and to help us keep our commitment to transparency in setting up these virtual meetings. None of this is easy, but I am eternally grateful for the leadership, the innovation, the determination, and the heart of our entire District 65 team. I am also grateful to our families and students, who have had to adapt to so many changes and deal with so much uncertainty. I know that there are questions about what the future holds and when and if we will be able to return to school this academic year. Please know that we continue to monitor this situation very closely, along with our colleagues at ETHS, with the City of Evanston, with city and state public health departments, with ISB, with regional superintendent at school communities. We are on regular calls with the Mayor's Coronavirus Task Force, which includes leaders from all sectors of the community and includes state and federal representatives. We will continue to work collaboratively with all of these groups and make decisions with the most current information that we have, keeping public health and our students' needs at the forefront. And with that, I would like to turn to Dr. Erhart, who can provide us maybe a little bit more update on how that is specifically working in our district.
Suni, thank you so much for your kind words. It truly has been a team effort. I'll just highlight some and then ask the board if they have any questions with that, and also Heidi can pitch in as well for that. The first one is on distance learning. Our CNI and technology team has done just stellar work in that area. We have distributed 700 devices and just over 200 hotspots for those families who did not have the access for that as well. We've heard positive feedback so far, and we have been planning actively on how we're going to move together in the future. We are looking at providing additional professional development for the staff and allocating time for them to be able to meaningfully participate with that, to try it out, and to collaborate with their colleagues on that as well. The team is also in the process of working with our parents and coming up with some training for parents who may need that additional help as well. As Suni said in her remarks, we're not sure what the future holds on the timing of this, but we are planning beyond the act of God days, which we are currently in, and looking at how do we transition, if we need to, to a truly e-learning scenario to go in that line as well. Does the board have any questions before I move on to talk about some other aspects of that?
Yes, I have a question. So can you share with us how, with what frequency parents can expect to hear updates and what the best site or where they should be going to get the most up-to-date information regarding District 65?
We are sending out regular updates primarily through Stacy Burzley Department as they're looking at rolling out the technology and working with the different issues with that. They can also go to our website and access it there, and there are resources and links that they can go to with that as well.
Thank you.
Sure. The next area we'll talk about is remote operations. Two primary functions we're looking at are two important ones. One is payroll and one is accounts payable. We have worked with some of the vendors where we can, for example, our utilities are going to an automatic deduction out of our account, so that can take place without us having to actually cut a check for that. We also are working on payroll and are doing that through distance learning, through distance operations with that. There are about 78 employees as of this morning who still receive hard checks, and so we're working with our bank, Byline Bank, and those employees will be instructed to pick up their check at Byline Bank through the drive-up window. They can do that as well. We also are continuing to pay the drivers through our contracted services with connections as the governor has told us to do so. We are also paying our long-term subs who are working on an intermediate basis for us throughout the year with that. And then we also are going to be paying our short-term subs. And the mechanism we're looking at now is to look at the last two or three months, see what their average workload has been, and then to come up with a formula to pay them some type of compensation to recognize them for the work that they have been doing for us in the past, also recognizing the financial needs they have, and also to encourage them to continue to subforce in the future. The contracted services company, ESS, will be providing vouchers to us, so we have very close accounting practices set up so that we will reimburse ESS as the evidence is brought forward with that, too. The other area is our cleaning of our buildings. We did have our custodians starting to clean the buildings. They had received the proper safety training and the safety equipment for that. Since the governor declared the staying home, then we have had all of our custodians staying with us time. They will resume to clean the schools when it is authorized to do so, once we get the word from the authorities regarding that. Do you have any questions in that area before I move on to the next one? The next area is Dr. Weatherspoon and myself have been communicating, for example, in the Mayor's COVID-19 Task Force about the importance of students having social distance, and we have said that going to playgrounds for playing at the high school, for students to have pickup basketball games, as an example, is not what we need to be doing at this point. We do encourage that our students would have maybe virtual playdates, but not have actual playdates to do that as well. Also, as Suni had mentioned, there was some issues today on the food distribution. I have been in contact with Dr. Weatherspoon, and we're going to have a virtual conversation tomorrow morning to work on planning on a food distribution on Wednesday with that, too. Lastly, some of us are checking in with the Mayor COVID-19 Task Force, which is on Tuesdays and Fridays, and that's been a very effective way for us to work together as a community to meet the needs of our students, our parents, and the community as whole. At this time, we'd open up for the board to ask any questions, and Heidi and myself would be glad to respond to those.
To Seth Gil, I just wanted to ask a question about possibly utilizing some of our schools as childcare centers, right? I mean, I know we have childcare centers across the community, but I know, I think the DA, the Department of Human Services, as well as ISB, issued a joint statement that allows school districts to apply to become childcare centers as part of helping out folks who actually have to go out and work in the front lines, right? We have our restaurant workers, we have folks who are health workers who are out there and wondering if that might be something that you can maybe bring up at the next COVID-19 city task force meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just respond?
This is Rebecca.
Can I just, for one second, really respond quickly? I know that the council, Evanston's Early Education Council, has been discussing that, and I think there are a group of childcare providers that are trying to figure out if they can apply, if they have staff who could meet the needs. So you're right, that is a really important need, and hopefully there are going to be some of our nonprofits that can help step up with that. I'm sorry, Rebecca, go ahead.
Yeah, so no, I just wanted to mention the Early Childhood Task Force that is working on childcare to answer Seth Gil's question. And then, too, you mentioned that Positive Connections is still getting paid. I think you referenced that. I don't know if it meant, if that's specific to our bus drivers, but if it is, I would really encourage us to consider delivery of meals to ensure that our students are getting those meals. And for, I think, the larger goal as a community is to ensure that people are staying in their homes and not congregating. I know that there isn't, and I've been told that there isn't anybody there to manage the six-foot distance that we're asking for people to stay, and so I would really implore the city and us to consider delivery of meals. And if there's a better system to encourage families to stay at home, as you've already mentioned, Phil, we are discouraging gatherings of 10 or more people. That does include playdates, that does include, you know, just being at parks and local places where germs do fester. So again, I just want to reiterate that point that Phil made earlier. I think our goal is to encourage families to stay at home. So whatever can be done to ensure that we're not asking families to leave their home to get meals, if we do have that resource available and we are still paying our contract through Positive Connections, to consider delivery of meals.
Rebecca, you are correct that we are still paying the drivers. They're being paid through Positive Connections, and then they send us an invoice on that. At this time, we are exploring that option to see what might be the possibilities with that. I'm very sure we're going to hear more about that tomorrow when I meet with Dr. Weatherspoon and also work with the Parks Department on looking at how can we learn from the experience today to make it better in the future, whether it be bus deliveries or other type of mechanisms we may put in place.
And just one more point, I really do want to stress for the families that are getting those meals, that there isn't a shortage of food. So if your family does really need the meals, please come and get the meals. They're there for you. We want to ensure for you to have those meals, but this isn't a time for you to hoard resources or to think that there won't be more meals available within the weeks to come. So we really do want to ensure if there is some way to know that the families that are in most need of those meals, that they are getting them. So just a message to the community and also for us, if there's any way that we can ensure families that aren't able to get to the sites at a reasonable time or within the timeframe that's allotted for families that transportation is an issue, that we do also consider that and that the community help us with that. There's definitely, you know, a great outpour from the community to ensure that families are fed. We just need to know that the families are being fed and that you are making use of the resources that are available should you need them.
I would hope that in our estimations for how much food we need, we recognize that there's different patterns that are going to happen, that people toward the end of the month, when snap funds are running out or when budgets are tighter, or as people have had their job status change recently. We can't necessarily use the projections of that first week to say this is what the need is. I think that it is going to continue to increase as people become more aware of the services, have more urgency, you know, people may have done more shopping before we started that first week, and now, you know, people are going to have things get more and more strained. So I want to make sure that we're not using past numbers to estimate future need, that we really are making sure, if we err, that we err on the side of having too much food, not enough.
If there was any way that we could survey families and ask families, are you going to be at this pickup? What pickup location are you going to be at? I think that that would really help to ensure that the families that are going to certain locations are getting their meals and for us to have a good sense to be prepared if sometime between now and next week, we could send a survey out of how many families are actually going to get those meals, so we could be better prepared.
Any other questions from the board? We thank you for your continued support and for all of our stakeholders, staff, students, parents, and community members to be able to work together as a team to create the best learning environment that we can for our students and for everyone to be safe and healthy.
I have a quick question. Dr. Erhart, you'd mentioned that the schools will be disinfected. I was curious if playground equipment would be included in that?
Yes, it would be. Any type of, also outdoor handles, anything of that nature will be disinfected as well. Good point, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or board comments?
Just one more consideration with food distribution. I'm sorry, this is something I'm very concerned about, is that if we only use the, if we're only getting surveys out to folks who currently use free and reduced lunch, we might be missing populations that their need is going to change in the next few weeks or months as their employment becomes more less stable or people go through savings or whatever. So I think we want to make sure we have a cushion for an emerging population that maybe doesn't believe they have access, but really communicate to them that there is food available for them as well.
That's a good point.
And I think it's important to note that the current food distribution plan is not only open to students, families who take advantage of free and reduced lunch. It is open to anybody who needs it, and I think we want to continue that going forward. And I know, you know, we just, we all just got the letter from ISB that is outlining their priorities, and their number one priority is to make sure that students who need them are getting meals. So I thank Dr. Erhart and Dr. Wenstrom and the whole team for all the work that they have done so far. We knew that there would be some hitches going forward, and we are doing our best. I know you all are doing your best to try to address them and to make sure that our kids are getting what they need. So thank you for that, and we'll, you know, ask the community to kind of keep an eye out for updates on, you know, if we can do a midweek distribution this week and then, and what, if any changes there will be going forward.
I just wanted to make a quick comment around the, since most of us are sitting at home now, and this is a ask for the whole community, is that you can fill out the US Census, the 2020 Census now. You're actually able to do it online now for this turn of the census, right? As well as do the paper copy. There is no, one of the things that people feared, at least particularly in the immigrant community, is that there was going to be a question around residency and citizenship, and there isn't. The courts ruled it out. So I encourage all the community members to please, 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 in your spare time, which I know you all have a lot of, to ensure that you fill out the census, because it really is helpful. We really need to fill out the census because we could lose a representation of the federal government, could use a really bad, really, really important funding for education. So I encourage everybody to please try to fill out the census when you have a minute during your day. I'll say this in Spanish, too.
Thank you very much for that reminder, too. Obviously, some of the activities that we had around doing a census tonight and things like that are obviously not going to happen now, so it's more important than ever that we get that communication out. And hopefully, there's some way that we can maybe push out an email communication and reminder to families in lieu of the census night that we were going to have. Okay, with that, we will move on to the rest of our agenda. Adila, do we have anyone signed up for public comment tonight?
No, we do not have anyone signed up for public comment.
Okay, so we will move on then to our action items. Biz, you have that motion? Do you have that in front of you?
I do.
Okay, so you want to go ahead and do that, then?
Yep. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves, and separations, resolution authorizing nonrenewal of non-tenured teachers, February 2020 board and finance committee meeting minutes, destruction of February 2018 closed session audio recording, January 2020 list of bills, treasurer's report, budget amendment, gift acceptance for Bethy Rhodes, security camera system replacement, FY21 building use fees, and financial audit services contract to Baker, Tilly, Vuchel, and Crouch.
Second.
Tanya Vudi.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan.
Yes.
Hale Perin.
Yes.
Cartha.
Yes. And then, Anya, you have the next motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Education recess into a virtual closed session meeting on March 30th, 2020, beginning at 5:00 PM for the purpose of discussing board vacancy. A virtual meeting will be held as ordered by the State of Illinois Governor for this current time period.
Second.
Tanya Vudi.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan.
Yes.
Hale Perin.
Yes.
Cartha.
Yes. And just to note on that, we did have to, we were originally scheduled to do our board vacancy interviews last week so that we could seat somebody tonight. Obviously, everything that's going on shifted our timeline a bit, so we will likely, we, once we have the exact date, we'll figure it out, but we are likely at this point to need to call a special meeting to seat a new board member, which would happen in early April at this point. So we will communicate that out when we have that date. The next item is the approval of Press Plus Issue 102. Sergio, you've got that?
I move that the Board of Education approve the policy updates recommended in the Press Plus Issue 102 and highlight it in the board memo.
Second.
Tanya Vudi.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan.
Yes.
Hale Perin.
Yes.
Cartha.
Yes. And then moving on to approval of the draft school calendar. Joey?
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2020-2021 school calendar as presented.
Second.
Do we have any, sorry, do we have any, this is the calendar that we actually first looked at last spring. It's been posted on the District 65 website since then. There are no changes to what was presented to us last spring. So I don't know, was there any discussion or question?
Yeah, I have a question. So this is a draft approval, and if, because we don't know where we'll be in, you know, one, two months, if there is a revision that's needed to that calendar, we still do have an opportunity to revise, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to be clear, whatever changes that need to be made as a result of however long school closures have to take place, and then how that might possibly impact the start of our next school year. So just so that folks are clear that this is the approval of a draft.
Well, so it was put together to us last year as a draft. What we're approving is the calendar now, so that would be the final calendar for the year. Obviously, and ISB has issued guidance that is going to allow us to make changes as necessary, because as Rebecca pointed out, we have no idea what is, what's going to be coming down and what adjustments might need to be made. So we will still have an opportunity to make changes if we need to. So it's not technically a draft. I mean, I think this is the final calendar, but with the understanding that.
Right, but for the time, for the time being, and we're anticipating that things will move smoothly, but if they don't, we do, we do have an opportunity.
We will have the opportunity, for sure. And typically, at this time of year, we also, the administration brings us the following year, so in this case, 2021-22 calendar, a draft to look at. I know that Beatrice and Melissa and some other team members were working on that, but then, obviously, with everything that happened, they weren't able to finalize that draft, so that's why we're not seeing the next year's draft calendar right now. Any other questions or comments?
Do we have any idea when that draft may come before us?
I anticipate that it would be prepared for the
I anticipate that it would be prepared for the April meeting. But we, just managing a few other things right now.
Just a few.
And so what matters is that we take our time to make sure that others have input into the calendar before we bring a draft to the board. So if I can get back to you on the timeline, that would be awesome.
Great, thank you.
Certainly.
All right. And, okay, so can we go ahead and do the vote on that?
Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Hilpern?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. And then we have something we had discussed at our last working board meeting, contracting with BWP for principal searches. So we'll read that motion and then I think Dr. Earhart has some updates for us. So Rebecca, did you?
Yes, so I moved that the Board of Education approve the BWP consulting contract for searches for our school principals at Haven and King Arts as presented.
Second.
Okay, and then Dr. Earhart, did you want to give us an update on that before we?
Yes, I'd be happy to give you an update on that, very much so. So what we'll be doing is, starting tomorrow, we'll post the vacancy postings on this. And that will be conducted by Deb Hill and her, and his, her associate that she'll be working with. The school district contact persons will be Beatrice Davis and Heidi Wenstrom. And then we will start to work on a survey and the community will be notified of that. The survey will be similar, but not the same as the principal survey. We've adapted it for the principal search for that. We will also do virtual focus groups and we'll be breaking those focus groups down. For example, for staff, it'll be by grade levels or grade level clusters. And then for our parents, we'll be doing the same type of breakdowns as well. And they'll be able to log in at different times in order to give their feedback on that. We will then take the feedback from students as well. And they have specific times for students in grades six, seven and eight to provide feedback. And then upon that, we will then be putting together a profile, which is very similar to the purpose of the profile that we had for the superintendent's search. Also very important is for us to reach out as wide of an area as we can with that. So we'll be having professional publications that will be coming out, that will be advertising with different professional organizations to put that in place as well. The survey we're looking at going online on February 27. And then the Haven Video Conference Focus Groups will begin on Monday, the 30th of March. The King Arts on March 31st. And then the survey will close on April 3. On April 9, the profile report will be presented to the administrative team. That would also include Dr. Horton on that as the incoming superintendent. And then the application deadline will be on April 13. BWP will then start to screen those candidates. And then they will interview on March 18 with the slate of candidates presented to the administrative team on April 20. And then the first round of interviews will be on April 27, I'm sorry, April 27 and April 28 at those schools. And we are in the process now of reaching out to see who would serve on those interview teams for that. The final round of interviews would be the first week in May. And then the candidate selection would take place shortly thereafter so that we would have the candidates presented to the school board on the 18th of May. The timeline I just went through will be in the weekly board communication this week, board. So you'll have a copy of that so you can see how we would go with that. That would then leave the month of June to get the transition activities started. And then that principals for each of those two schools would start on Wednesday, July 1st. So that's just a quick overview and myself and Dr. Wenstrom would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the search.
Thank you for that update and I appreciate the work that you've done with BWP to try to adapt, obviously, knowing that we can't conduct focus groups and things like that in the typical way, but, you know, using technology that we have at our disposal. I appreciate that you were able to come up with an alternative plan. And also just noting again, as we noticed, noted during the working board meeting, that typically for principal searches, we have not in the past used a search firm. But as we discussed, in this case, given that we are in a leadership transition year, and I think now even more than ever, given some of the, you know, just with everything that is going on, having the assistance to make sure we're casting as wide a net as possible so that we get the best candidates that we can for these two positions is really important. Do board members have any additional questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. One, I appreciate, as Sunny said, the thoughtfulness in terms of looking for opportunities to make sure stakeholders can be engaged. The question that I have is, has there been any conversation about how the racial equity impact assessment tool might be applied to each of these searches? And then I'm thinking about the focus groups and the engagement with young people. If there is a plan to consider how there may be disproportionate access to these opportunities to engage in a remote focus group? And how to make sure that there is a racially and economically diverse subset of students and parents who are being engaged for this leadership profile?
Those are excellent questions, Anya. The first question was to how we're going to apply the Equity Lens Tool. Two ways we've talked about doing that in the interview process would be that we would be providing some key questions for BWP to ask during the screening process for the candidates. And then when the interview team questions are developed for the interview teams for our district, that those will also go through the Equity Lens as well. And then obviously, as we go through the process, we'll continue to use that. The second question is a really tough one because we definitely want to have access as many persons as we can regardless of their status. In addition to the, one thing I failed to mention, too, I should go back to, is for the focus groups, like we did for the superintendent's group, there will be an opportunity in the evening for anyone in the community to take part in that. Secondly, students will also be asked to complete the survey as well, anybody in grades six, seven and eight. I do realize that's still a technology access issue. Hopefully, with the devices that we distributed to our students in grades six, seven and eight and with the hotspots that we're using for distance learning, that students will have, hopefully, enough access to be able to participate in that.
And are educator relationships with educators being utilized in order to notify and remind students of those opportunities?
Yes, we'll be putting out communication exactly for that.
Okay.
And then I should mention, too, because it goes along with your question, Anya. Ondalee is working with the two principals of the schools to put together a representative group of students across all areas with that to make sure that we have equity with that group as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I think, just thinking about using the Equity Impact Assessment Tool, when we think about putting together the interview team as well, staff, to make sure that we're getting a representative group on the interview committee.
Yeah, you know, just to make sure that we reach out to all community members. You know, I just wanted to let everybody know, so Zoom comes as an app, right, for cellphones. Even for folks who don't have computers, most of our families have a cell phone. And I'm wondering if maybe you can text Haven and, you know, Haven families as well as, to let them know that that's an option and the dates when that'll, when the, that'll happen in regards to the principal search, right, when you want to engage community.
Yeah, that's very true. One of the reasons we selected Zoom is because it can either be done via computer or by your smartphone as well.
And I want to urge also equity in terms of ward representation. So there is a significant number of Haven students and families that live in the fifth ward. So ensuring that there's both diversity in the racial makeup, but also the ward representation for students and families. And I think that that can be said, too, for King Arts as a magnet school.
Sure, I got that as well. Dr. Wenstrom, is there any further that you'd like to add to the search process?
I just wanted to say that I'm thankful to our present principals for the leadership that they have displayed. And I'm grateful that we will have their support as we move forward with the plan to search for new leaders for the next era. I think probably one of the most important thing that community members, staff, students, parents can do is when, as soon as those surveys come out, I can't tell you how important each of our stakeholders' input is into the development of that leadership profile. That process was tried and true with our superintendent's search and I'm looking forward to leveraging the community's priorities as we move forward with these two key leadership roles.
Thank you. And yes, thankful, too, that Dr. Horton is going to be able to be an integral part of both of those processes. So thank you for your availability on that and thank you both, Dr. Earhart and Dr. Wenstrom, for your work on this. Are there any other questions? Okay, so Adila, can we do the vote then, please?
Yes. Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Hilpern?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. And with that, we have no other business. Again, Adila, thank you so much. This went more smoothly than I would have even anticipated. So yes, huge round of applause from our homes to you for setting this up for us. I see that we have a number of community members who were able to join us and I hope that it was a seamless experience for everyone as it was for us. So, you know, the effort you put into it.
What's that?
Do we have public comment?
That was, that was.
The board meeting.
Yeah, we, that was earlier in the agenda.
No, I'm saying normally you have public comment after the meeting, too, if you didn't sign.
We have not done that in a number of, for a while.
Okay, so is there anything I can ask about or make a statement about?
Since this is kind of an unusual meeting, I guess if you want to adhere to the, we can add a public comment for you. So three minutes and please no mentioning any district employees by name.
Okay. No, I just wanted to.
And say your name, please.
Judith Tredway McKinney-Vento Leazan. I was wondering about what happened today with the food distribution. I drove around to the four sites and I was only going around for about half an hour after about 1:00 and then all of the food was gone. And so I was kind of surprised because they didn't have enough food out. But then Ms. Mendoza mentioned that they had more than enough food. So was it a planning thing?
So Judith, we actually did cover that earlier in the meeting. We are working with ETHS and the city. We're going to try to get another food distribution set for Wednesday, if at all possible, if we can get the food in. There wasn't enough food ordered for today, unfortunately. So we're going to try to correct that for this week and then moving forward. So that we are aware of the issues and are working to resolve them.
Okay, and one question, one more question. Who are the interim principals at Haven and King?
There will, there are no interim principals for, or I guess King, Trish Murray will continue on in that role.
And Haven?
Ms. Roberson is still the principal at Haven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so anyway, again, thank you, Adila, for setting this all up for us. And we know that we have a good process moving forward for as long as we need to continue the staying at home. So with no further business to come before the board, I adjourn this meeting at 7:49 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Stay safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.